Well, any and only meeting order. Please leave us. Paul?
Sam Flipfo, here. Carsonson?
Here.
You can. Try again.
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
And Alexson? Herman Curry?
Here. Hey, Mr. Gergen, do we have any announcements or correspondence?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
All right, approval of October second, two thousand twenty-four planning zoning board meeting minutes as presented. I get a first and a second?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Sounds good. Okay.
In Flipfo? Yes, Carsonson?
Yes.
Yes, try it again. Yes, Martinez?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes. Motion passes. Is there anybody listed on public comment? No one's listed on public comment. Right.
You gotta sign up for that?
Public comment is something a little bit different than what's being presented, so if we're gonna be doing something that you're gonna be commenting on as a presentation, then we'll swear you in at that time.
Okay.
And you'll be able to make comment time.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, any old business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
New business PCB two four dash one zero consideration of site plan review preliminary and final plat approval for Karmax located at two one oh one east route one seventy-three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this matter, Mr. Chairman, comes before you see the thing for a site plan, as you recall. Several months ago, we did, um, review a proposed concept for Karmax. This is the proposal for a Karmax distribution, uh, and auction center, as you recall, that that become, uh, reviewed for a concept. Uh, there's a complete full presentation several months ago by Karmax. So what you're looking at this evening is, is a site plan. Uh, there is a proposed site plan review and final plat, this proposed project. I wanted to just refresh your memory, this project is a proposed project, the Antioch Corporate Park on one seventy-three. The applicant's coming before you this evening for a ninety-two acre development. Uh, the proposed Karmax is approximately fifty-nine acres. This will be a Karmax distribution and, uh, auction facility. Uh, as you remember, the applicant did outline their business plan. They also provide some summaries of engineering and traffic study at the concept level. Uh, this matter is, this evening is coming before you for a site plan. So what you have before you this evening is a site plan for the proposed fifty-two acre site. Uh, there's also approximately a twenty-six acre site, uh, which is not actually being reviewed this evening as it relates to site plan. That property will be for future development. Okay, on route one seventy-three. So what you have before you this evening is a proposed site plan for, again, the twenty, fifty-two acre project, uh, and also, uh, the proposed, uh, preliminary and final plat for their overall property. It would be two parcels on this property, again, the approximately fifty-nine acre site and also, uh, um, approximately twenty-eight acre site, uh, for the balance of property as it relates to future development. Uh, with regards to the site plan, I wanted to direct your attention, uh, very briefly, um, the applicant's council, Mr. Goldsmith, I was actually here this evening, they'll kind of walk you through a proposed, proposed project itself. I wanted to provide some highlights, uh, overall. Uh, the applicant's proposing two buildings, uh, specifically to be approximately, the first building is approximately a little more than thirty-eight thousand square feet. The second building, which is auction facility, would be approximately a little more than eleven thousand square feet. So approximately almost fifty thousand square feet of buildings. Um, there are, again, to refresh your memory, uh, the sixteen acres of asphalt area, this large asphalt area will be used for storage, the vehicles. So there's a large area of asphalt. Applicant's engineer, um, and council will kind of walk you through the concept, again, refresh your memory. As it relates to reverse aspect, the applicant is proposing, uh, specifically, um, two thousand seven, six hundred seventy-eight spaces, uh, for this overall facility. Uh, in accordance with the village ordinance, there will be required one space for every three hundred square feet of the actual building square footage. So that would comes out to approximately a hundred sixty-five spaces. Obviously, the applicant's proposed parking goes well beyond that. This, again, is for, uh, a distribution center for all the Karmaxes in the region. The applicant did, has identified the general, uh, distribution of these vehicles and the vast majority of the vehicles, just to refresh your memory, will be, um, used for sale at Karmax. Uh, there will be a certain percentage of those vehicles, uh, which will be auction, uh, in auction facility, uh, within this proposed campus. Um, you have to recall, the applicant did submit a complete traffic study analysis at the last concept meeting. Um, that traffic study showed that there was no need for an additional full access point, as you recall. As part of the PUD, um, there was identification of a second access point on route one seventy-three, um, which was part of the PUD. Our staff did determine that that was a minor change to the PUD. Therefore, especially use was not required as part of this analysis. Uh, you require, you refresh your memory, that proposed traffic study. Then, uh, outlined that there would be no deterioration of the level of service, um, with respect to the proposed use of this distribution center for Karmax. Therefore, all the traffic of this proposed use will be coming through, uh, for Gregory Drive, as you recall, there's a full access there along handy foil. So, again, directing your attention to the actual site plan.
There's a colored one on page thirteen.
Yeah, that's the one looking for. There's the, there's a colored one, it's really nice one. Right there. So, um, adjacent to the site would be a proposed handy foil, as you recall, handy foil drives, uh, adjacent to handy foil. So the applicant is proposing that that new, that east-west axis road will be the main entrance, um, from Gregory Drive into this overall site. So, again, the applicant is not proposing a, another signalization or another access point on route one seventy-three. So I wanted to kind of cover that from a traffic perspective. Again, as I've highlighted, the traffic study that you have, uh, did identify there to be no deterioration of the existing level of service, um, based on this. And I'm gonna allow the applicant's council, the representatives from Karmax, to kind of walk you through, uh, the traffic analysis, uh, as it relates to, to proposed additional traffic that may, uh, result from this proposed development. Directing your attention to the architecture. And wait. So as you recall, any proposed site plan does require us to review the architectural elevations. The applicant's two proposed building, again, one is approximately thirty-eight thousand square feet, other one's approximately a little more than eleven thousand square feet. So there are the proposed buildings within this proposed campus. Uh, specifically, this, uh, these, but those being constructed, I'll CMU block. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct the buildings in lieu of doing tilt-up. As you know, most of the buildings, all the buildings at Antioch Corporate Park can be constructed with, uh, precast tilt-up materials. And in lieu, uh, in lieu of doing that, the applicant's proposing a construction of CMU block building. Uh, you can see that these proposed elevation, uh, all four elevations will be CMU block. Uh, there are, there is several incorporations of soldier course, CMU block soldier courses to try to break up, uh, the overall architectural aspect of the building provides of additional architectural interest and variation to the overall, uh, elevations. Again, this is a fairly utilitarian, uh, architectural form. Uh, the buildings will be painted, uh, earth tone color, again, to provide some additional architectural, um, uh, color to the overall project. But, again, this proposed, uh, architectural, um, buildings are very generally industrial in nature. CMU block, well, we, in some many cases, we do discourage it. Uh, I believe, uh, in this case, because it's a large industrial park, all the other buildings have been constructed with the concrete material. I believe, uh, the proposed CMU block in this case, uh, is appropriate based on the overall character. It's proposed care of existing, um, consistent with the architectural, uh, standards within the original PUD, uh, for the Antioch Corporate Park, which was approved back in two thousand and seven. So in some substance, Mr. Chairman, we believe the proposed elevations, um, are consistent with the PUD and our village ordinance. In addition, as, as you can see in this elevation, the applicant has incorporated a parapet, uh, which will, uh, provide, uh, in the area, uh, in fully enclosed area for all the mechanical systems, uh, the mechanical system will be concealed within that parapet itself. Uh, you can see by looking at these elevations, several of the elevations do have bay doors, uh, which will be used for, um, uh, bringing vehicles in and out the structure itself. Conditioner, a series of, of mechanical doors for, um, for pedestrian access or employee slash customer, uh, access into the buildings. Their proposed metal canopies over these proposed doors as the elevations reflect behind me. So that, uh, really provides a summary of the proposed architectural elevations for these proposed two buildings. Directing your attention to the landscaping. That going back, I think.
There's a colored landscape down that way, keep going up. I'll be down with you. You go, yeah, down.
As you know, well know, the village has an extensive Atlantic landscape ordinance. I have provided a summary of the proposed landscaping. I wanted to highlight several areas. Most importantly, as you all know, with the current, with, guys, the context, um, this proposed development is adjacent to the, uh, Mill Creek tributary, but also more importantly, it's adjacent to a single family neighborhood. And then, and number of the residents are actually here this evening. Um, those residents live in, uh, a subdivision, partially incorporated and partially unincorporated Lake County. But there is a residential, large estate homes located to the west, uh, just approximately, maybe, uh, quarter of a mile, half a mile, uh, west of this proposed project. Um, and those homes, um, obviously have a view shed. I think we discussed that, and I'm gonna allow the applicant's team to kind of provide you a summary of some of the view sheds for those single family homes. So it's important that there be extensive landscaping along the western perimeter of this property to try to mitigate any impact. So directing your attention to the exhibit behind me, you can see that the applicant has incorporated, uh, extensive row of evergreens along the retention pond. There's a large, uh, retention stormwater pond located to the, to the west of this large, uh, sixteen acre asphalt parking lot. The applicant has provided, um, attempted to provide a hundred percent offer by incorporating, uh, landscaping, a row of evergreen trees along the western perimeter of, um, the retention pond. In addition, there is a small retention pond, uh, at the, uh, northwest corner of this property. As you can see in this exhibit here, the applicant has, in addition, has incorporated a row of evergreen trees, again, in attempt to provide offering. Um, there is some, some, um, topography at the northwest corner. But there has been a request, the staff does have some concerns. We would like to work with the applicant to explore whether there is a potential to incorporate some additional birmingham to provide some additional landscaping opportunities. Excuse me. We think there's, uh, we think there's an opportunity to add some additional birmingham and landscaping, and we'd like to have an opportunity to work with the applicant and their team to provide, uh, some additional, uh, birmingham and landscaping. One of the constraints that we have, as you can see, there's flood plain right along the Mill Creek, so that areas that could actually be, be used for birmingham is somewhat limited. So, um, again, we think working with the applicant's engineer or landscaper protect, there may be some opportunities to add some landscaping or limited birmingham, provide some additional offering to mitigate any potential impact on the estate homes located , uh, to the west of this proposed development. Um, but overall, the landscape plan does comply with the village's, uh, landscape requirements. With one exception, we, um, have highlighted in the area, we think there's an opportunity not only to add some additional landscaping along the western perimeter, along some birmingham, but as you come into this proposed campus from handy foil, you can see there's a large landscape island which is adjacent to the southern perimeter of the proposed sixteen acres of parking lot. We think there's an opportunity to ask some additional landscaping, um, along the actual landscape, uh, island, and also to the south of the site, which will provide some additional offering from whatever's developed to the, to the south of the site. So that incorporates the staff's, uh, analysis as it relates to landscape plan. As it relates to asset management practices, this has been a consistent theme that staff has consistently outlined. Uh, we are concerned of this proposed project. In fact, because of the number of vehicles, well, over two thousand vehicles, um, uh, I'm sorry, approximately three thousand parking spaces which would be used for this property, um, because of its proximity, uh, to, uh, the Mill Creek tributary. And based on our ordinance, which requires one landscape island for every twelve spaces, that's what our ordinance requires, uh, for property, um, there would be a requirement to add, uh, some additional landscape items, or actually extensive landscape items within this parking area. So to provide some additional, um, breaking up the area, we like to work with the applicant to incorporate some rial soils or some form of landscaping within this proposed sixteen acre site to incorporate, um, some BNP's, which we believe would, um, provide some , uh, minimum, minimize any potential impact on the Mill Creek and from the storage of these vehicles. So, again, we are requesting, it is a stipulation that the applicant incorporate or explore some BNP's within the site to try to soften the impact on this large amount of impervious area on the Mill Creek tributary. So, again, that's something we're requesting the applicant consider. Directing your attention to the photometric plan. Obviously, lighting, uh, is critically important, uh, as a, as, as in this proposed project. The applicant did, um, submit a photometric plan. Our staff has outlined some concerns about the maximum level of illumination. They actually looked at the perimeter, uh, foot candle illumination, does comply, uh, with the village's ordinance. We, as you well know, we do require a half a foot candle maximum at the property line. As you, if you look at the property area perimeter of the proposed project, generally is all zero foot candle illumination. But nevertheless, there are some, several areas, uh, where staff has concerns about the maximum, uh, foot candle illumination. The applicant had, did, has taken staff's consideration, uh, and has provided a new photometric plan. Um, and I'm gonna allow the applicant to walk you through that plan, which addresses staff's concerns. Very briefly, there is a trash enclosure plan that has been submitted and that does comply, uh, with the village's ordinance. Directing your attention to stormwater engineering. Uh, HR Green, uh, is in the process of having their first major review of all the submitted engineering, the programing engineering. That, uh, review is ongoing. But there are, um, let's talk about very briefly, stormwater. The applicant has, uh, two, uh, stormwater retention ponds. Both of those properties, uh, I'm sorry, both of those ponds are located, uh, to, uh, the west of the proposed parking area of this overall site. Again, HR Green is currently, uh, reviewing, uh, the somewhere, somewhere calculations to make sure that pond complies with all the village's ordinance and Lake County's stormwater, uh, requirements. Directing your attention to the final plat. The applicant has submitted a final plat. This proposed project, that there will be two proposed subdivisions of two lots. One would be approximately fifty-eight acres and one would be approximately a little less than twenty-seven acres. Uh, so there is a final plat, applicant's coming in to subdivide this property into two lots. So with that, Mr. Chairman, our staff, uh, this evening, uh, has outlined a series of recommendations, uh, with required stipulations. And with that, I'm gonna conclude my staff report. Been more than happy to answer any questions you have. But, again, the whole team for Karmax, including their attorney, Mr. Goldsmith, is actually here this evening to answer any specific questions and to kind of walk you through, uh, this proposed site plan. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Okay, um. I suppose we, probably the best thing to do is go through the, uh, presentation on your lighting and whatever else you have to, uh, show us. So if you could please, anybody who's going to be, uh, speaking to this, uh, proposal, please stand and raise your right hand, be sworn in. Anybody wants to be speaking about this, please? Stand up.
You straight up tell the truth for all the group and not the public?
Okay, thank you. At any point, uh, when we're going through our presentation, please speak into the microphone so we have it on, on the record. And if you were going to speak about this proposal as someone from the public, you'll have to come up, state your name, your address, give us that information, and then we have it through the record.
If they're sharing something, can you also share it on the Zoom, please?
Michael, have you done that before?
I've done it, uh, shared, shared Zoom. I don't know if it's, um, um, share.
This guy's, since when we're working on this? Give us a minute.
Maybe it's still share. Actually, we'll put it down here, so share. Oops, our presentation on here. There you go. Yeah, I thought we did, I think we had to have it on the computer, I'm sorry. I don't have, I did not download the PowerPoint presentation on this computer.
Awesome.
Yeah, so I'm not sure we can share it.
It's also part of our practice.
It was part.
I didn't see all that.
We know it on the station.
Yeah, that would help.
Right. So maybe they could do that, or something, I don't know.
We're trying to get a stick that will allow Mike to get down.
Sounds good.
Just take a minute, cause he's.
I was gonna say, can you email it to Rachel?
Okay, where the, your radar stick? Throw it in, it's a stick.
Okay. You better, no, you better take those skills back here, Bobby. Okay, top stuff. There you go, hit it. Okay, screen.
Much everything I got on. Thirty and thirty-one. Can, can she see this?
I can see it.
You can see it now.
Do you have a?
But it looks like the village uses Google, not Microsoft, maybe.
You're trying to sell me all you.
Is it his password or your?
I'm gonna try and log in myself, but it won't. I mean, you guys have a? Sign in for the city or the village?
Let's see.
It's what?
Actually, I.
She needs to see it right now.
Cause she, she is.
It's gonna be probably, I don't know what else, and they're getting all good there.
The top is where they have market drivers. Worked prior, yes, so you have about three thousand places around.
Yes, we're coming out of residence.
That's not where it is, bro. They just don't have it dashed out or aligned out. Because it's not for the people coming into the auctions. Other than this. It's not taking. There's Rachel, we talked to Rachel.
You want me to try?
Yeah, you can. Yeah.
I'm not sure why this isn't working.
I just don't wanna keep people waiting. I know.
You know, we.
Does she have her phone, like, emails her phone?
Yeah.
Yeah. This guy's saying, can you, uh?
Can we just email it to her? Email her the PowerPoint? Cause we can't.
Yeah, we want to do it right now.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Our assistant, can we email to you?
Fair.
Could you give, uh, your, your email, Brittany?
I'm gonna stop sharing.
You see the presentation?
Yeah, do you want it in the chat, or how do you want me to, do you want me to just say it?
You can throw it in the chat.
Okay. Actually, I can't chat, so it's, uh, Brittany, B R I T T A N Y.
Hey, I'm ready for you.
A L Y S S at gmail dot com.
One more time?
Brittany, and then A L Y S S at gmail dot com.
It looks like we're making. Alright. So, uh, my name is. I'm just gonna give you a quick overview, and I'm gonna turn over Kelton, who's gonna give you more of the details. Just wanted to make several points with respect to the. So it's actually a three lot subdivision, uh, there's a small four acre lot that's to the southeast that is being retained by the owner. So we're, we're developing the rest of the site, but the owners retaining that other frontage on one seventy-three. The, um. Comments about parking, so there is, there is a parking lot, which is for employees and guests. There's also a storage area, which is permitted under your ordinance and also under the D U D. Or the.
Excuse me, everyone. Yeah. You, can you hear that? Okay.
Alright, let's keep the public chatter down for just a minute, if we could, let's get through the presentation, and we'll go from there. Um, could you, uh, show me where this, uh, other three, three or four acre lot is? I can see the two, but I don't know where the third one is.
Here in the bottom right, where it is. It's the southeast corner of the site. Do you see where the arrow is?
So, it's, it's parcel zero three one eight, one zero one zero one zero, is that? Or?
The pointer helps you. Designated lot three.
Is that where the farm is right now?
So next to the agricultural. Right?
Correct.
Is that where the farmhouse is right now?
Uh, it partially sits on.
Partial, yeah, right, okay, alright, I see it.
So, um, the second point I was making is with regard to the storage area you put on the site. Or actually, this. So most of the parking on the site is for storage, not for public or for employees. Employee lots will be striped and meet your code. The storage will meet your code, which does not require striping, parking aisles, islands, et cetera. But because the staff asked us to look at B M Ps, we're gonna look at a way to enhance the B M Ps. But I would, I would tell you, the site already is designed to fully comply with the, with the Lake County ordinance. And the B M P that is being used is a filtering system before it gets to the pond. Our storage pond before it gets to the creek, so we're already meeting the Lake County standard. We're gonna go above and beyond that, have to request the staff to look what we can do on site for further B M P. With respect to lighting, we realized that we could actually light the site well below what was submitted originally. And we're gonna reduce the amount of lumens by a third, and Kelton will talk about that. Landscaping, we are looking to what we can do. We have, we showed you, we'll show you again, perspectives, it's very hard to see the site from the neighbors to the west because of the existing topography. But we are gonna look at that further, we already have berms and evergreens along that western lake side. And we have a similar motif on the north. So we've already done a lot, but we will see if we can do more. At some point, we will, we'll run out of room to put plants in, but we're gonna take a look at that. So with that in mind, I'm gonna turn it over to Kelton McCoy.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that again. I'm gonna piggyback directly off of Bruce here, um, and on our screen here, we have our highway perspectives. Uh, this is something you guys have seen before, uh, this is from one seventy-three. Uh, just to kind of go along with what Bruce was saying, we have planned burming and landscaping on the south portion of our site here. Uh, so even this perspective is, uh, pretty bare for what's actually gonna be there. So I know that was a, a point of concern for both, uh, staff and obviously the neighbors. Um, I'll go ahead and dip directly into the photometric plan. So we do have another perspective from the west. So here's a picture from the west, and as you can see, I know we've parked all this stuff previously with you guys, but as you can see, the water tower there. That's obviously on the other side of Handy Foil. And here's another good aerial photo of that. Water tower here, so that's a good perspective on the, from the west side there. I know, obviously, it would change with the construction buildings, but as Bruce mentioned, the undulation and topography of land there, uh, is the, the Carmax and the neighbors. Jumping down into the photometric plan. We, uh, as Michael mentioned, we had submitted our original photometric plan with our initial document plan set. First staff recommendation and coordination, uh, we did submit a new photometric plan that eliminated the lumens thirty percent specifically in the customer employee parking lot area. Forcing that light directly down into the ground, uh, with little splash. Site plan, uh, as Bruce mentioned, uh, we're, we're undertaking all stormwater mitigation standards, uh, for Lake County. Um, and I do have Joe Mayer from Kimberly Moore here to detail that in more, more depth. Uh, we do have a preliminary plan for the bio swells as it stands now. Uh, we're still working out the technical side of that, uh, but we are making the attempt, uh, to solidify what staff had recommended. So that, that's all that we have. You know, our neighbors have questions, we'd be more than happy to, to answer, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Sam Flobo, do you have any questions?
Does, does Dad have any, um, concern about the existing floodplain that's like running up to the parking? Space expansion or?
If I may, I can bring our civil engineer in.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, my name is Joe Mayer, I'm with Kimberly Moore, the Vice Civil Engineer on the project. Um, but as, as, uh, Bruce mentioned, um, we've done a study to outline and understand where the existing floodplain permits are for Mill Creek. Um, our goal is to stay out of the floodplain as much as possible and limit disturbance for the minor areas where we are approaching, we're providing compensatory storage in accordance with county requirements, uh, to offset any impact. Uh, so that's already been contemplated as a part of our stormwater design, um, working with the village engineer. Um, you know, some of the finer details before, uh, you know, both final.
That compensatory storage is shown down here in the bottom left.
Yeah, so, uh, the location of that compensatory storage is, um, uh, near the intersection of the creek and Route one seventy-three, where we'd be providing the excess capacity.
Okay.
So basically, you're mitigating where it's, where you're showing some of the floodplain coming into that space and putting more compensatory storage to the, the, uh, south.
The south, right?
West, west corner of where this property is, that's correct.
Yes. Okay. And. We feel like the grading is sufficient to, to direct the water that way?
Yeah, generally speaking, this, this property slopes from east to west down to the creek, obviously, and we'd be maintaining those drainage patterns. So it's, you know, as, as part of inherently in the code, um, we need to maintain that, the drainage paths, um, and direction of flow, and then we're also meeting the, the release rate of bond control requirements as outlined in the code.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, Ms. Carsonson?
Uh, like I said the last time, I'd just like to hear from the public.
Hey, Ms. Veach?
Um, I think some of us were questioning the auction part of it. Is that going to operate during business hours, Monday through Friday?
Hi, I'm Paul Thompson, I'm the Real Estate Acquisition Manager for Carmax. Yeah, so the auction component, um, that is going to be a once or twice a week event. Right now, we're holding most of our auctions virtually. Um, that was as a result of consumer preference change for our dealer customers during COVID. Um, we've realized that a lot of these customers didn't want to show up in sight, so we developed a great online system and portal to be able to auction vehicles that way. So if the preference of the dealers turns back to in person, we would be holding in-person auctions. But that would only be once or twice a week, depending on the volume, usually on a day from Tuesday to Thursday. But it would be within business hours.
Okay.
Yep. Of course. Anything else? Just man again.
So I just wanna clarify, so, um, so the thirty-five thousand eight hundred square foot proposed building is where the auction? No. Is that where you'll work on the vehicles?
That's exactly right.
Okay. And so, and then you'll have the sixteen acres essentially in between where you'll park vehicles that are not being worked on. Or ones that are waiting to be worked on, and then this other seventy-nine hundred eighty square foot building is the trash in the car wash?
So the seventy-nine hundred square foot building, that is the auction building.
Oh.
So that is where the events would be held in person if we do have them.
Okay.
Um, if we're not having them in person and it's virtual, we'll have a camera set up. So the cars will be coming in one side, be auctioned online, and then coming out the other side.
Okay. So then where is the trash in the car wash in this?
Yeah, do you wanna point that out on the side of the road?
So that's, that's the. Just remind everybody that. Just make sure you talk into the microphones. Thank you so much. So the car wash, if you can see where my mouse is, just on the south side of our reproduction building right here, this kind of track looking thing. That's where our car wash would be.
And then the traction button.
On the other side, if you can see right here, just on the other side of that little kick out.
Okay. And you're exactly right on the staging of the sixteen acres, so that is where vehicles that are waiting to be reconditioned, that are waiting to be taken away after they're reconditioned, and that are also waiting to be auctioned or be taken away after the auction events.
So all of that is maintained on essentially lot one, correct?
Yes, lot two is what the village asked us to see if we could carve out a lot for future development. And with the proximity of one seventy-three, that would be a very attractive site. So we've carved that out, done all our work behind it. Uh, I just would like to reemphasize that there's a huge amount of floodplain on this property. So that's why whatever was originally thought of in I, the I D I's mind back in two thousand and seven turned out to be not viable. So we're using the backside of the site for this development, we're leaving twenty plus acres on the front. And, uh, that makes it, uh, I would think appealing both for present development and for future growth.
And then the lot three, which is just east of that, is what the owner's gonna retain?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, you have, um, expansion, it looks like one and two up towards the north for additional parking?
We've saved some area that might be usable in the future, we're not sure it'll ever be needed. But the site has been evaluated for all the impervious area. And so another thing which Joe, uh, may not have mentioned is that, so the detention pond is taking all the hundred year floodplain that's required to take. And, uh, then the B M Ps are on the east side of the, of the detention pond to filter the water before it goes into the detention pond, and then it goes eventually into the creek with the release rate as required by the Lake County ordinance.
Okay. And that is all of the question.
Mr. Martinez?
Uh, I wish I could have had at least an aerial shot, just to compare, uh, Handy Foil to the site of, of what we're talking about here.
Okay, so there we go. I heard you kind of talking yourselves, Handy Foil is about five hundred thousand square feet.
And we're talking, uh.
Thirty-eight for the main building and twelve for the other.
Uh, and I appreciate that on public record, I think that, uh, maybe there's some concern that we may encounter during tonight.
Appreciate your answer.
The, uh, speaking of the building and of the parking lot, we're talking fencing around the sixteen acre lot?
That's correct, there's fencing as well as landscaping, um, along the perimeter.
What is the standard for your industry for fencing now? Do we, am I looking at a sixteen foot fence with privacy fencing slats? What's the standard?
Yeah, what currently is proposed, um, is a, I believe it's six feet tall, if you give me a second, I will check that, but it, it does have privacy slats.
No further questions? Okay, um. I'd like to get a copy of the photometrics plan after you've made your changes. Um, so it can be distributed between us, so we can, they'll have some input on that. Um, the berms for your landscaping, what's the height?
Um, they vary, but on average, about four to five feet.
Okay, so it's, uh, three to one in ratio for its, for its, uh.
Yeah, we're showing four to one to have a little bit more, more manageable slope.
Alright, alright, and then four to five feet, and then plantings on top with, correct, okay. Um, your B M Ps, um, do you have a plan showing that, or should I, I should, I should actually rephrase that? Could you give us a plan showing your B O Ps with the changes that you're gonna do with, with, uh, staff's recommendations?
Yes.
Will you work out?
Yes, I am.
Alright, um, at this time, is, is there anyone in the public who'd like to come up and make any comments?
Yes.
State your name and your address.
Hello, everybody. Know my readers, so I can actually read my own writing.
Always good to have those.
Oh. Pages, something else. Hello, I'm Chuck Esdale, I've resided at nineteen five eighty West Peterson Drive in Antioch for twenty-nine years, and have lived in Lake County my entire life. Over one-third of my eight acre property lies within the village of Antioch. My eastern boundary borders the Beck family, their ten acre residence, which is entirely in the village of Antioch. Their eastern boundary borders the proposed Carmax site. Yesterday, I met with Director Gergen to discuss the proposed plans for Carmax. Frankly, I'm here to voice the frustration my neighbors and I feel over the utter disregard this board has shown. We received no note, proper notification, and clearly, little to no thought was given to the destructive impact this development would have in our neighborhood. We're talking about intense light pollution, negative impacts on the environment, views of an absolute eyesore, and worst of all, inevitable, inevitable decline in our property values. When I asked why the Carmax site was pushed to the north onto the property right next to our neighborhood, the answer I was given is that it would, that it was look unsightly from Route one seventy-three. So I ask you, placing it next to our homes is somehow the better solution? Explain this reasoning to me. Then when I questioned why no berm with evergreen barrier was proposed to shield our neighborhood like the barrier shielding the homes along Crawford Road on the east side of the corporate park. The answer was, there's no room due to the creek and wetlands. Let me be clear. If a berm with evergreen trees aren't possible with this plan, then the plan itself is flawed. Change the plan. Your job is to ensure that developments work for the community and those of us who live in it. What we're asking for is fair and necessary, protection and respect for the neighborhood and its taxpaying residents. Reading the meeting minutes, I saw Chairman McCarty raise concerns about oil and gas pollutants contaminating the wetlands and creek. The response given was that oil and gas would settle in the pond before discharging into the creek. Anyone with common sense knows oil and gas floats on water and doesn't settle. This isn't just laughable, it's irresponsible and shows a lack of basic, basic environmental consideration. All our homes are on wells. Polluting our drinking water is irresponsible, dangerous to our health, and completely unacceptable. This board is here to ensure that development doesn't compromise our environment or our safety. Yet here we are tonight. So I'm asking you, how many of you have actually visited our neighborhood? Anyone go down Peterson Drive, take a walk around, see what our view is? The photo that I just saw off the end of our street, the photographer had to be laying out his belly to take that because they certainly don't look what the views are when I walk down there and see handy foil and everything. So if anyone did a casual, to a casual observer would notice the handy foil building with its multiple flashing green and red loading dock lights that flash twenty-four hour the day, seven days a week with no barriers to block it. Believe me, it's a lovely sight dropping down our road and looking out our windows at it. Yet another example of this village dropping the ball and not being concerned about its residents. And now you wanna plunk this Carmax eyesore right next to us without fully thinking it through, the multiple impacts it will have on us. Have any of you taken the time to realize what's at stake here? Would any of you be fine with this kind of project in your backyard next to your homes? I doubt it. I urge you to do your jobs with the diligence and respect our community deserves. This proposal as it stands is absolutely unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, do you have a copy of your, of your notes that we could possibly give to put in the record?
I can make you a copy.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And get it to the village and then I can put it in the record for you.
Thank you, appreciate your time, all of you.
Thank you, um, couple, couple things there, uh, Mr. Garrigan, if you could address just the, uh, um, oils and other things coming off of, I mean, what happens on that lot, it's gonna go through what?
Well, BMPs, one of these, we're talking about bioswale. One of the things that staff's been pushing for along with the planning commission is to make sure that corporation BMPs, best man for practices, have what we call a treatment tray, so as the oils are, I mean, and again, there's no guaranteed oils, but there's any potential oils or contamination that it would go through what we call bioswale, or there'd be a treatment tray, we fully treat it before it would reach any temporary tension area.
Right.
Which would obviously overflow potentially into the mill creek. So what, any water would have no negative impact on the mill creek tributary through that BMP.
Correct, in the, in the old days, we used to use, uh, triple basins.
Right.
And triple basins, uh, typically would, uh, fill up and then overflow. And it would be a, a situation that would, uh, in fact, the, it, it affect the environment much more than what we've come together with BMPs in the, in, in this type of scenario. BMPs help filter all that out before it ever gets to what we're gonna affect for the, uh, environment through there. Um, that's where you're a little misunderstanding on, on that, so just so we have clarification. The only thing we have, uh, left is to have some of those things, uh, uh, dialed in with, with, uh, staff for, uh, lighting and for, um, the BMPs added. Um, we are putting a, a, a berm on the west side of the water detention area, correct? Can you give me that, and we, we talked about the height of that, it's four to five feet.
Yeah, there's actually a, a larger berm, obviously, to actually retain the water as well, so there is a raise in elevation, um, with the landscape berm around the retention pond itself.
Okay, and that's gonna have vegetation on top of the berm to actually help, uh, block some of the sight lines that you're talking about, that you're seeing now, this will probably help block that a little more for you, so.
Yeah, we fo- and we focus those vegetated screenings both on the west side as well as, um, around to like the south side, understanding that, um, there's less of a concern on the east towards Antioch.
All right, thank you, and as far as groundwater, uh, getting into your, your drinking water, that's, you can address that a little bit, is there any, uh, effect to that happening to the residents in the area? They're on wells and septic, so they're concerned.
Uh, yeah, we're, uh, we, we can, I guess in short, there is no like deep excavation or we're not, we're not, we're above the groundwater table, um, where we're not, you know, in promoting, I mean, as a part of the landscape order, sorry, the county stormwater ordinance, there is a promote, promotion of infiltration, which we do need to beat. Um, where we're encouraging like freshwater to go back into the ground as an offset to the pavement, but, um, that's clean water, there is no industrial discharge of, uh, you know, that type of water into the groundwater.
Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Garrigan, what are you looking for this evening?
Hold on.
Mr. Garrigan?
Um, it's one follow-up on statement that we made in public comment, all proper notices were taken at the lot, correct? Yes.
Mr. Garrigan, what are you, what are we looking for this evening?
So you have, Mr. Chairman, you have two motions, you have a motion for a site plan review, uh, recommendation, uh, with the, um, illuminated stipulations, as you'll see in my staff report. Specifically, there is a motion for approval of a site plan approval, uh, with four stipulations. There's also a motion for recommendation of the final plat, of the three, again, corrected, three lots uh, in the final plat with our two standard stipulations.
Okay, um, Ms. Carsonson, since you're not here and, uh, you wanted to wait until we had, uh, public comment, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I have a comment, if I may.
Um, were you sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. State your name and your address.
Yes, hello, good evening, oh, yes, I reside at one ninety-five, um, Peterson Drive as well, at the farm net. And so I have three concerns that I'm hoping that you guys can clarify, you guys have touched on, but I'm hoping to get more details, so.
Speak into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The berm being five foot high, as you know, when the land goes to the east, it pulls downwards. So that's why we can see the handy foil and all of the flashing lights already, um, you look past our street, the farm field, it seems flat, but the land actually goes down, so handy foil will seem like it's coming up out of the ground, optical illusionally speaking. So the height of the berm is a big concern of ours, um, and, uh, the lighting is a second big concern of ours, especially in the evening time, um, the light pollution and we, we live on farms, we wanna see the stars, see it's aesthetic, but that's what we moved out, so incorporated land for. Um, and the third is sound, so I know that the auctions will potentially be taking place inside a smaller, um, building, I, I understand, so I'm concerned about the sounds, um, during the day as well, so I work with special needs kids, I have therapy animals, horses and dogs. Um, so sometimes the individuals can be triggered by sound that are not as ordinary, and that could be abrupt, um, as well as it could disrupt the animals, if they're doing their jobs with the therapy aspect. So those are my three big concerns, if you guys have touched on one, I appreciate it.
So, uh, I'll, I'll touch on the berm first, and I think it's a great point brought up and one, one that we contemplated about the elevation from Peterson, looking down at the site and realizing that building berms may not have the desired effects, cause you're above it and, and looking down. So we actually then turned our focus on actual vegetative stuff being immediately adjacent to our improvements, so that there's more of, uh, opaque screen, um, so that you're, it is directly blocking our improvements as opposed to focusing our time and energy on the berms. Um, so we are still providing berms, but we, we realize that it wouldn't have the desired effect and then proved our attention to landscaping as well.
And the height of those screens?
Um, so there's, there's minimum requirements about like the, the planting sizes when they're established or planted, and then obviously they grow to mature heights, but these would be full-size evergreens and trees.
What's your, consider, what do you consider full-size evergreens, the white line?
And again, I apologize, we have to talk into the microphones, not only are we keeping records and minutes here, but we also have one of our board members, one of our experienced board members who's not here and is in person, is on.
And we, we really don't wanna get into a back and forth here at this point, so he's, he's addressing the needs and, and questions that you brought up, but let him explain, and you have two questions?
Thank you.
More, sorry, so there is minimum requirements established in zoning code for heights of trees when planted and size and caliber. Um, typically, uh, uh, we can work with staff, I don't know the direct answer, but I think it is typically around six feet start. Um, you know, from a nursery, uh, where they're still young enough to, to be planted and survive, so there's a, there's a balance there, but, um, as mentioned, the berm itself would be four to five feet tall and then plantings on top of it. Um, I, I'm gonna pass it to Kelton, who can address the photometrics and noise question.
Yeah, for the photometrics, we feel like we have already made the attempt and will continue to make the attempt to, to work with staff and each there, uh, as for noise, same thing, we'll make sure to be under all noise code or written ordinances, uh, do any testing of that sort that would be required, uh, to show that, uh, to both staff and, and the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Michael, did we have a detail of the landscaping plan and what the actual plants that were going in and what was given to us, or?
Yes, there, I believe there is a, there's a list in the landscape plan, I believe there's a planting list, there's a, with a, um, species. I think my been first, if I could pull the file. I have actually my on the first page, but there's a species where I pulled.
Okay, I mean, I was just asking, since we have someone in the public who was asking, you know, the size of the trees and?
Shade, shade trees are fifty-eight shade trees, uh, evergreen trees are sixty-nine. Um, ornamental trees, eleven, trobes are two hundred fifty-nine, and evergreen troves at ninety-five, that's the proposed.
Right, but did we have the actual like diameter and like the, the breakdown of the plantings that are going in in it, the, the trees?
I don't have that, there's breakdown.
I.
The diameter is usually, um, three to four inches.
What I sent you, I, I apologize, this was, this was not originally submitted, um, and I did, was able to work with the applicant to get this, but there is a species, I thought I sent this exhibit here with the actual species, so that would have been a separate. I believe that was, uh, I'll have to go through my, my plan, but I.
I mean, I don't remember seeing it, but.
It says one page, so one page.
Asking, you know, the other commissioners if they got it or not.
So I can incorporate, I can tell you what species are of, of, um, of, of the maple, basically. We have a combination of, for the shade trees, we have, uh, uh, maples, we have some acberries, beech trees, uh, there's a series of honey locusts, and, and London plane trees. You commonly know sycamores here, evergreens, there's Norway spruces. I can be more happy to say you caught this, but there is a list of all species.
Okay.
For some reason, I thought I sent that, but if I didn't, I apologize.
Well, I don't.
It was, it was a one-page document.
Yeah, I don't think so, and the bioswells, what, are you still working on with the applicant on that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Based on the, the, actually staff comments previously, we had looked at adding additional evergreens to the berms on the west and the north. So we were already sensitive that if you, uh, you know, evergreens typically start at six feet, you're at four to five feet off the berm, that's a pretty substantial block, and we'll look to try to minimize the spacing to make it effective for benefit of the neighbors and to meet the requirements of the village.
Ms. Carsonson, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Just to let the public know, you know, we've worked really hard on this board for light ordinances and, um, I share that, cause I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that we've continued to restructure that over the time that many of us have been on this board. Um, I was curious, you know, it was mentioned about sound, right, and I think, um, how, like, I would imagine the, the noisiest time, right, is gonna be when you have some of these auctions, would be the time that most people are there, if and when people are coming in person. And so what does that look like, right, are there? Is it inside the building, is it outside the building? How can we be sensitive to the folks that live near this facility?
I just point out that we're right next to a heavy manufacturing building with lots of semi-trailers coming in and out. We're talking about cars being moved through the auction house for the purpose of the, uh, live or the virtual auction. Uh, so you're just talking about cars, you're not talking about semi-trailers. We have, so, we have trailers that bring in the cars, uh, but they're sitting on the lot on the storage area, and they're, they're brought through the facility for the one or two days a week where the auctions take place. There's not a lot of activity on the site, uh, the reconditioning is all inside, and it's just a question of moving vehicles around the site, and those are cars, not trucks or semi-trailers, except for the delivery.
And so no sort of event, right, I just wanna make sure there's no sort of like activity outside of the building that's gonna disrupt the neighbors.
Yeah, understood, um, typically, these auctions are not like public auctions, like it's not just me or you that can go to these auctions and, you know, walk up and bid, these are private auctions, so these guys are coming for business. They'll go in, into the building, do their auction business, and leave.
So business to business auctions.
Correct. Correct.
So with that.
Go ahead.
So with that being said, so, as an example, right, so they have an auction, Chevy comes in, specific dealership, and buys ten cars. They're gonna come in with a car hauler to pick up those ten cars, right?
Correct.
So in that case, that is the larger bid, right, that's a semi, the, you know, hauler behind them coming in to pick up these trucks, and so are those during the day, is that?
Yeah, those pickups are all during the day, and it really depends on the pickup capabilities of the individual dealers. Um, we'll actually find that some of our dealers will bring just a handful of people to drive the vehicles away, and then you'll find vehicles, uh, carriers of all sizes up to eight cars. If there's a big dealer that's buying in volume, they're likely to be bringing in a car trailer. Um, but a lot of these will be bringing individual drivers, just two or three car stingers, et cetera.
Okay. Um, so is this facility functioning like, as far as like the repairs and, uh, rejuvenate, rejuvenating these vehicles to be sold, are, are there specific hours that that's done, is it twenty-four hours a day, do you have multiple shifts, how does that work?
So, um, I think right now we're planning on two shifts, but it is going to be for a majority of the day and a good portion of the night as well. All of the reconditioning is done in the reconditioning building, that's, all the doors are going to be closed, so the sound from that is going to be minimal for sure. And then as far as the auction events, these are very professional events, um, it's not what you would think when you think of an auction event. You know, we've got a professional auctioneer, they are gonna have a microphone, it's gonna be going over a PA. The building doors are going to be open just to be letting the cars in and out, but it really is not a noisy affair.
Ms. Carsonson, did you have anything else?
I'm just thinking about other recent projects, Michael, this one's for you around construction and just ensuring that, you know, if this goes through, that we can make sure that the creek has as minimal, you know, pollution as possible, I think the construction has been a concern for residents in other areas, and I just, what are we doing to prevent that on future projects?
Obviously, whenever there's a major construction project like this, there has to be obviously compliance with the Lake County Stormwater Ordinance, um, what the Watership Development Ordinance, um, as you all know, uh, Lake County Stormwater Commission, they have, uh, actually several representatives who actually, even not live adjacent to Antioch, who are very familiar with our projects, who actually monitor our projects, most importantly, this project under construction will be monitored by field inspectors from HR, we have, we have our engineers, they be monitoring this project to make sure not only that it complies with all our ordinances, but most importantly, Lake County. To make sure not only that complies with all our ordinances, but most importantly, Lake County. Stormwater ordinances, Watership Development ordinances, so all those ordinances have to be complied with regards to erosion control. Everything as relates to that, so that it would, the project be continually monitored by representatives from our engineer and. Also, um, our public works department. So that's how it will be monitored. So there's gonna be a bottom line, as you all know, maybe don't, uh, there's gonna be a lot of eyes. On the project because of the size of the project, just like marketplace, uh, we had active, um, we had active, uh. People, it, it, representatives from H R Green, from Lake County. Uh, actually, we had a consultant, uh, who worked with us, had associates out there, uh, so this project will be somewhat similar to that. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
Uh, you know, I, again, noise, I, I completely understand that. Our, the, one thing I would say is if we're talking, it's gonna be fenced sixteen acre lot. Uh, with this, um, privacy screen fencing, wouldn't you say that in itself helps buffer some of the noise?
You're correct, I mean, the, one of the other benefits of the vegetative screen also is that it has inherent, um, noise buffering qualities. Especially the evergreens, some of the density that we're proposing, putting the trees pretty closely together, so it'll certainly help as well.
Are there any other questions for the board members?
May I ask one more question?
Hang on just one second. Ms. Carsonson, any more questions?
No.
Okay, please stand up to the mic.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Were the holding areas for the cars, the two thousand, three thousand car parking lot, is this thing gonna be illuminated all night long? Anyone know the answer to that?
We'll address that in a second, thank you.
What's that?
We'll address that in just a second, thank you. The hours of operation for the, for the facility is, uh, approximately two shifts. Um, and will that be illuminated all night long?
It will, it will always be illuminated in the parking area for security reasons. Um, for, at different times of the night, it will be lowered though, when we don't have employees on the site.
So you'll be able to reduce the, the light effects with the L E D lighting down in the evening?
Yes, sir.
What time does that typically occur, like when, what is the second shift then? You know?
That's a detail that, uh, I'm going to have to inquire a little bit more and to, and get an answer for you, I don't wanna speak out of turn on that.
Sure, sure, here's.
Okay.
So.
I think you misunderstood my question, were the three thousand.
We are gonna have to talk to the microphone when we talk.
Where the three thousand cars are being stored in the big parking lot at sixteen acres. Is that whole thing gonna be illuminated all night for security purposes, or is it gonna be dark? So you're gonna keep that thing glowing all night long? That's my question, that's not a trick question, it's.
Right, that was, that was, that was answered.
Yeah, that's right.
That was answered.
So, a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Michael, I know that they, the applicant submitted a new lighting plan, reducing the lumens. Is that within our new lighting ordinance that we approved?
No, that has not been retrieved by the village board yet.
Oh.
So that's not, but, but against staff, we did take consideration of that new lighting ordinance. And I think this reflected in the new photometric plan, regardless of maximum, you know, we, we did incorporate comments about that. So at least we did follow this, we, we followed the spirit.
I'm just asking because we just looked at that lighting ordinance.
Correct.
Last meeting, so.
Right, we, that's coming before the village board.
Hey, um. Go ahead.
So, the, we met your ordinance, and now we're reducing it by a third to be well below the ordinance. So we think that apparently it's even good or better than what your new ordinance is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll look to this board for a motion.
I'd like to see some addition, I mean, Michael, I didn't see, I did go back and look at my email as well, I didn't see the landscape plan. Um.
Well, again, just for the record, I did, I apologize, I was looking through my, uh, sent emails, I did not send the one page. A one-page tuts off species, that's all, you have a landscape plan that was sent to you, just, you did not see the species. So obviously, if you want to continue this matter because you wanna reduce the species, that's your prerogative. I did reduce species, um. So, it's, it's your prerogative, you want, you wanna individually reduce species. And you have suggestions that you think there's more, better, um, species based on, on your background, um, that's fine, it's your prerogative.
And the bioswales, when is, is it possible to see that, or when would those be incorporated, cause.
As you're, again, right, that's something that is your prerogative, we can, we, it's your prerogative to continue the matter. To have an opportunity to look at the bioswales and, uh, uh, the landscape species, that's completely appropriate. Um, it depends what you, you wanna do, or you can incorporate stipulation to have the applicant work with the village engineer and staff. On the bioswale, subject to, um, that, I mean, obviously, th- there will be probably completion of the bioswale. Designs prior to this, going to the village board, uh, in December. It's, it's whatever the chairman's in the, in the commission's prerogative is. Do you wanna continue it, or do you wanna a- approve it, subject to additional stipulations, that's your prerogative. It's up to you.
I just kinda feel like there's been a lot of comments about updated. You know, see, having stuff added and updated and, um. That's my only concern, Michael. And, and I get that it's a really small project in comparison to, you know, handy foil, and I, I get that. But at the same time, um, I think we need to do our due diligence and make sure that. You know.
So you have a motion?
Are you looking for the actual, are you looking for the, um, so I know, understand, clarification, is you're looking for the actual, um, bioswale designs, is that in, in?
Well, I think that's.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And I think also, you know, the, the detail of the landscaping, we were missing that portion.
Mm-hmm.
And especially considering that we have several residents that, you know. Have arrived here to, to voice their concerns and we're sitting here, you know, looking at a picture. That was not part of the original package that we saw.
Right.
Which was another concern, uh, at, with the same, um, industrial park.
That's fine, that's, I mean, that's what you want, that's absolutely fine, you can just continue it or, um, discussion on the species.
I would say, I would say that there's the three, three items there, the bioswales that have been presented and that are gonna be added. Help out with what you, you're negotiating, working with, with staff on. The lighting, that you're gonna be reducing and, and how that's gonna look, photometrics plan would be very helpful.
Revised.
Revised photometric plan, and then, um. The landscaping with more detail would be, would be greatly appreciated.
So this, this photometric on the screen.
Have we walked, you submitted a new photometric plan, is that, is that fair, have you, at least highlighted the changes?
Are they on there?
Yes, right, there's a, there's a, there's a new one right here before you.
Yeah, I can't even see that from here.
Understood.
And it wasn't part, I mean, and understand, we're not trying to be difficult, but we're trying to do our due diligence for the community, that's. That's why we're sitting up here, and this wasn't part of our original package that would, that we saw, and so we weren't, we didn't have the opportunity to review it.
Totally understood, and, and this is a different than we initially submitted, we worked with staff.
That's, that's.
This new one has zero hook handle all the way around, all the way into three layers. The lumens in the customer employee parking lot were reduced by thirty percent on this plan compared to the plan on.
The original plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So as Bruce initiated, uh, we came in under the code initially, and we are now reducing it even further, you know, we're trying to work with that.
Uh-huh, sure.
I, I understand that, I just, again, me sitting here, public sitting here, and I, I can't see that. I have a hard enough time seeing things in front of my eyes right here, so, uh, I need my glasses too. So, uh, I, I really would like a little more time to review some of the information here, and I would assume that this board wants the same, so. Looking for a motion.
Or I can, to, I'll make, well, either way, to continue. So, um, I'm gonna make a, a motion to continue P C B twenty-four, um, ten. Twenty-four dash ten, consideration of site plan review. Preliminary and final plan approval for car max located at twenty-one oh one, east route one seventy-three. And, and looking for those additional items, um, so to the next, uh.
Next meeting, which would be December, what would it be?
The first Wednesday in December, whatever the date that is. December fourth, yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Just wait a good seconds. Rule call.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mish, yes, Manigan, yes, Martinez.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes. Thank you, thank you for coming in, thank you for your comments, uh, neighbors, and, and put it on your calendar for December fourth. And, uh, please come with some information so we can see it and go through it, and, and then we can come to a. Better conclusion for this project.
Mr. Chairman, if you had a magnifying glass, you couldn't read a, a lighting plan. So we'll, we'll try to figure out a better way of showing it.
I can read a, I can read a lighting plan.
Okay.
We can, we can microwave through that, I just, I just don't have anything in front of me, and that, there I can't see.
I looked at it this morning, and it's.
I appreciate that.
And the new, the numbers are so small.
They're very tiny, yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, Michael, can we also get this? Um, the deck that, up there, right, cause that's revised, that's a revised demo that you're showing on the screen. And then any new additional, you know, kinda so we can see the comparison to of.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, okay, uh, next item on the, uh, agenda is P C B two four. Uh, is one, two, consideration of site plan review to consider the addition of volleyball courts. Uh, at fifteen hundred Main Street. And with that, this happens to be a client of mine, so I will accuse myself and go sit out in the audience. And if you come up with.
Give me your presentation.
Thank you.
You want me to leave the entire building?
I don't want you to, but.
Okay.
We can put it on the record, but the chair is not. Well, I mean, in the absence of a chair. In the absence of chair, we should appoint a temporary chair for procedural purposes, and anyways, I've been doing this. Not as long as Michael, who's awesome at this, um, but I've been doing this for twenty-five years, so between the two of us, me and Michael can help anybody who would be. Um, driving the boat for a temporary.
Okay.
A motion. Anyway, anyone wants to step up?
Well, I mean, or I can, it doesn't matter.
Mrs. Manigan, would you? Up to you, I don't care either, I have to go out. Okay.
We need a motion, real quick, a second.
Yeah, I will make a motion to appoint, um, Mrs. Manigan as our, as our chairperson until Mr. McCarthy returns to the meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, but it's tremendous honor.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And chairperson, uh, this matter comes up this evening for a site plan, and you are probably coming at all the Johnny snack shop.
Michael, do they need to be around this to the P as well?
Um, I believe, um, I think we do. Um, Brittany, can I just kinda watch you through it, I think you know the sites, um.
I know.
So this is Johnny's, uh, snack shop, which is, um, used to be, used to be Johnny's Steakhouse, um, probably. Fifteen hundred Main Street, this is on route eighty-three, and the property is currently zone B two. Um, the applicant, uh, is coming before the commissioner this evening, uh, for a request. Um, to add a, a recreational aspect to this restaurant, yeah, this property is an existing restaurant. There is no rezoning, um, this is in some ways a courtesy review, this does not require any type of really special use, in fact. Um, there, I think there is some gray area whether this even requires a site plan review. Because this is clearly, this proposal, proposal is an ancillary use to the main use, which is a restaurant. That's not changing, applicant is the process of reviewing the restaurant, I believe it's gonna be a sports bar. Uh, and I'm gonna allow the applicant kinda walking through his proposed business plan and some of the changes that are being proposed. Uh, for this business, for the applicant, the pro- proposed site is approximately two acres. Um, the property is adjacent to commercial, so there's commercial development, uh, to the east. Uh, round eighty-three, there's commercial development to the north, commercial development to the south. But there is several single-family homes, as you can see, uh, in the, uh, uh, image or the aerial behind me. There are several single-family homes located to the west of the sub, of, of this property. The applicant is proposing to take, um, specifically the western perimeter of the property they currently own. Which is currently a grass area, it's just a large baking grass area, and then convert that into six volleyball courts. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow the applicant kinda walk you through his plan and what they're proposing. It's by understanding that these proposed volleyball courts would be seasonal, obviously would not be all year round, that would be seasonal operation. Uh, itself, um, the applicant is really, again, not proposing, uh. Again, this will be, I'm sorry, ancillary to the proposed restaurant, this is not gonna be a recreational, uh, club. Or a major sports complex, which would have its whole separate analysis, this is really simply ancillary. Uh, in part and parcel of to the proposed restaurant. Uh, overall, the applicant, based on our analysis, um, we've looked at the parking, uh, there's actually extensive parking. Um, if you actually look from a observation perspective, which is also, also important in planning. Uh, to observe an area, what is parking demand, is that parking lot consistently full? Um, based on our analysis, there, there is ample parking, specifically based that, uh, our review is approximately. Ninety parking spaces for the subject site, uh, so we believe there's extensive ample parking for these six additional, um. Uh, volleyball courts, um, so this area itself, um, the only real from a planning perspective. Uh, there is, again, as I've identified, several single-family homes, uh, to the west. Specifically, there is approximately a hundred thirty-seven feet between, uh, the one nearest home. And approximately where, where these volleyball courts would be, but as you can see in this area, there is extensive, uh, landscaping. There's a large line of mature trees, they have been there for many, many years, that could provide kind of a buffer to this area, so. Uh, we believe that the actual proposed volleyball courts would not have a negative impact. On the adjacent single-family homes if there are reasonable parameters. So those parameters I've outlined in my staff report, specifically requesting that there be no, um, actual illumination. That these volleyball courts be not illuminated, uh, and specifically that there be no sound systems with music. I know there's been unfortunately one resident, we, we, we've been dealing with for several years, who's had some concerns about noise. There, and we've dealt with some of the noise issues between the outdoor dining, um. Um, but we believe that's different analysis from what the proposed volleyball courts are. So this evening, uh, we are making a favorable recommendation, uh, with the, uh, three outlined stipulations. First are two standard stipulations. First are two standard stipulations, and number three, no installation of lighting or sound system, uh, being incorporated within these volleyball, volleyball courts. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report, I'm hoping you're happy to answer any questions. Applicant, owner of the business is actually here, kind of walks through, uh, the business plan itself. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Andy Helsner, I'm the chief operating officer and CFO for North Shore Capital Group Food Beverage and Entertainment. Um, as you guys may or may not know, we own Oliveri North here in town, we also own Johnny's. Um, we purchased Johnny's in December of last year, and it's, uh, it's a dog, it's a big loser. And it needs a rebranding, it needs a revitalization, it needs life. Um, it's not located downtown, it's not located in the heart of your business district, and therefore, it's got to become a destination. It needs something to bring people in, um, beyond just good food and good service. I think we, we offer quality products and, uh, we have good service. Um, however, it's ever since COVID has not been a moneymaker, and we knew that when we bought. And so, uh, we also own a restaurant out in Wakanda called J.J. Twigs of Wakanda, we have two volleyball courts there. Um, they're designed, as Mike said, to be an accessory to the restaurant, and, uh, they thrive. And, um, people love it, uh, there's lots of volleyball courts in the area from, uh, Jesse Oaks to Side Outs, uh, to Thirsty Horse over at Salem. And it's something that's very recreational all summer long. Um, we're looking to put these in to simply draw people to the property, so we can then serve them food and beverage, um, as well. We've put in some pool tables, we've put in some dartboards, we've created a little bit on the inside. We really need to kind of make a splash to do this, we are going to go through a rebranding process as well. And, uh, hopefully by the first of the year, we'll become the world famous J.J. Twigs of Antioch. And, uh, we'll duplicate what we have over there, and so this is our, our first step of going through that process. So, if you have any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward, these are sand volleyball courts, there's nothing more to it, there's no drainage really issues, there's no. You know what I mean, like, there's, we're just gonna move dirt, and that's about it. And, uh, like Mike said, we were kind of even shocked that we have to go through a site plan for this, because it is authorized in the village. Um, it's, it should be a no-brainer to that point. Um, and if there's any questions, you guys have thoughts, concerns, anything specific, I'd be happy to answer, but.
So I'm gonna go around, so, um, Commissioner Santoso, do you have any questions? So that, the buffer, it's going here to the west, is that right? The, the exit, that those.
Right where this, where you did.
On that side.
Right here.
Yeah, okay. And the, the landscaping there that exists between there and Sunset Ridge is all stained, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And there's no lighting, no, no music, nothing? Do you have leagues at, at J.J. Twigs?
Yes.
Okay, but they would only operate like before sunset?
So, yeah, so at, at J.J. Twigs, they have lights, down the road, we may come back, request lighting down the road, but that's not part of our plan right now. We'd just like to get the volleyball courts, start creating some leagues, typically you do like a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday league. Sunday leagues happen throughout the daytime, um, all the leagues would ramp up well before nine o'clock. And some down here in the Midwest is maybe nine fifteen during the summer at, at the latest, in June, July. But, well, these are, these are things that are going to happen at five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night, probably ramp up by eight, eight-thirty, depending on how big the league is. I think in twenty-twenty-five, I don't expect anything crazy, we may only have a day or two of leagues. You know, as it grows, maybe we can.
Sure.
Do more, if that's the case, then we would come back and ask for other amenities, you know, per ordinances. But all we're looking for today is the ability at volleyball courts, create a, a destination for a restaurant.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Commissioner Parkinson, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner, none for me. Myself?
Um, so I just, I have a question, so the two pictures that you have in front of us today, sorry, Brittany, you can't see these, but, um. So there's a lot of greenery added, right, like, um, all along the front there, right? Like, when you come in, you have that little, um, carve out there, um, and it has beautiful plants and stuff there, and then trees all along. Are you adding all of that? Is this down there now?
I think the architect got really excited. I don't think we need to add any trees on the back, on the western, uh, line, it's very thick, it's very heavily wooded, very, very mature trees. These trees are, some of them gotta be thirty-five, forty feet tall, I mean, it's very thick. Um, now that the fall has happened, obviously, there wouldn't be volleyball going on now, I can actually see through the trees, there's leaves that fall. But, um, I don't think it needs anything.
It looks really nice.
It looks gorgeous, and I, you can't see the building next door either, he just, he's not out there.
Yeah, that's kind of, I was, okay, those are my questions, okay.
No, I think he just got a little exuberant, he was going to gather the rotations.
I don't have any other question. Aren't you next?
Um, you mentioned J.J. Twigs, do you have residential neighbors behind J.J. Twigs and volleyball courts?
They're not direct, they're not a hundred thirty-seven feet away. So, but the answer is yes, they are set back, we have like a, um, little bus terminal service station right behind what I would say is probably the width of a driveway, maybe the width of another driveway, there is residential, we get zero complaints. So, I mean, it's thumping of a volleyball, cheering of people.
Sure.
You know, it's just, it's, and it's not going to happen late at night. I, I don't even know what the noise ordinance is in, in, um, Antioch, the village. Um, but I know we're not, uh, part of the county, because section two, um, of the, of, uh, the ordinance for Lake County says that section two, article three does not apply, that there's a village at stake. So, is there a village noise ordinance? What is it?
Yeah, yes, there is.
But do we know what it is specifically? Well, you can find all of our ordinances online, and, um, I believe Unicode or. I believe Unicode, so, how about this, if you leave your contact information, the, you'll get your copy of it, and I'm sure you will continue to comply with it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, well, I, I, I do have a concern, because as mentioned, there is complaints already coming in from neighbors.
Not one neighbor.
Oh, one neighbor, as of now. Uh, you guys just had, I don't know if you're aware, but was not, uh, police called out.
Yeah.
Uh, this past Saturday, in the car show. In the morning.
At ten forty-five in the morning, for a car show.
That's my concern, hey, where.
And I didn't break a, an ordinance. Okay, he's gonna answer questions, ask questions, and you can choose to answer them or not. Sure. Okay? Yeah.
That's where my concern lies, we're talking, uh, volleyball leagues till nine, something at night in the summertime. We already have one neighbor that's upset at, for noise at ten forty-five in the morning. And that's what we're bringing to our community. You. Again, as I look at, uh, and I'm not familiar with, uh, J.J. Twigs, but I don't see any residential. I see a, uh, Green World, Copliar Supply, and I see a bus terminal, as your neighbor.
Behind the bus terminal, it represents.
Uh, you're, and you're talking, uh, a mass parking lot.
Four hundred feet, yeah.
Right, four hundred feet, right, this is completely different than that four hundred feet.
Well, so the between where the volleyball courts are going.
It's residential.
And there's a hundred seventy feet, and then there's the Sunset Ridge, and these are some of my neighbors, by the way, so.
And I've met with the, uh, president of the association, and they're very supportive, like, um.
Of that, of the Sunset Ridge, okay. Have you, have you, have you checked with the, um, the friends of Lake Antioch? Because there's a separate board that, that manages the Hundred Acre Lake that you're very close to as well. I don't know if it would be worth doing that, or if the village has any concerns. I don't know if there's any additional noise ordinances when it comes to a body of water.
Yeah, one of the challenges is this, this is not a public area, so there's not a special use that would require notice, so we did not give notice to residents. Um, for the record, um, there is, we, you know, I, I think I did highlight, there's one resident I know who's had concerns about noise, especially music. And the police departments worked with them extensively, or past few years I've worked with them previously. I have no idea what his, what his concerns would be with related to this proposal. Um, but that's, that's, that there is, there has been a consistent complaint about noise, or, or music, right?
And I mean, I, I played in a sand volleyball league for many years, so I understand. And, um, but I, I know also, there's, there is oftentimes music, you know, when they're playing, people are drinking. Um, so, I don't know, I can understand where, you know, Mr. Martinez is coming from.
You know, the building's been a restaurant since nineteen forty-six.
Right.
That house was built in nineteen ninety-eight, but the gentleman moved in in two thousand and five, next to a commercial building, all of which were there. He's also called the police on the car wash, because people have their music playing when they're drying their car. He's also physically thrown food off his deck when the Guitar Center was there next to the fire pot, the fireplace, the surrounding place. Um, and so obviously, we can't, we can't conform to one person to run a business. Because ultimately, I'm not saying without volleyball courts, we don't have a business. But for the record, we're losing several hundred thousand dollars, you know, if we can only sustain maybe another twelve months, and Antioch will end up with an empty restaurant.
Right.
It's not what the village wants either. So when you say we're letting something in, what we're trying to do is preserve a place where people can go and enjoy and hang out. We're trying to reach out in the community, we want to decorate everything with Antioch High School, Antioch Police Department, Antioch Fire Department, I'm working with a, a business liaison to create events that we can do over there. But to not be able to use the outside of my own building, of the land that we purchased, with the intent and not knowing that there was a person. Like, we can't conform to one, as long as we live within the ordinance, and if the ordinance is. We'll live with it, whatever it is. Um, he lives in the county, we live in the village, we operate in the village. Our property line between county and village is in the county.
So. I would say that if the property was on the east side of route eighty-three, I would have no issue with it. At the end of the day, what you bought was a restaurant.
Hmm.
And this additional outside entertainment section that you plan to put up, um.
Would you like to create a buffer between others two and two and two? I put one, one and one, and you put a three, and you get a bigger thirty-five foot buffer that maybe reduces that? But to not be like, Mike, you brought up outdoor dining, it's called the place for people eating food outside on a deck that was pre-built.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about one, one individual's complaint about one issue, and, and I hate to hear that you have, uh, you don't have any. Uh, the problem is that when we're talking leagues, you're talking fifty people out there cheering and, and having a good time, and I'm all for having a good time. Like I said, if this was on the other side of route eighty-three, hundred percent with you. My concern is that's going to be going on all summer long, uh, so, well, at the, you know, nine o'clock at night. And even without illumination, we all know that sunset's late in the summertime.
Nine o'clock.
And I could see the outcry from the neighbors, I could see it already. I'm not saying no, I'm saying yes, we should work with you, I'd like to see different variations of this, where we can work with you. I'd like to see the other commissioners here that could do just the same and visualize it, because having Brittany here in this discussion, she's not able to visualize what we're, what we're talking. And so, uh, if anyone's. Uh, right, that's what she sees, right, and so, um, options for me would be best.
I really think there's only two options, if this, it's this, or you reduce down to three. Because I can't move the parking lot, because now I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, you got underground sewer, you got, you know, you, you, you got a whole ball of wax. If I could move the building, I would, I can't.
Right, no, I get it, I mean, though.
How does reducing it down to three change anything?
Less people.
Less people, right? I mean, and, and we were just talking the previous, uh, go-around about, uh, privacy fence and things, again, about for, oh, noise. Again, sympathetic to the neighbors, uh, sympathetic to you retaining your profitable business.
Right.
And so, like, again, I, I appreciate having an option where we could meet common ground.
Oh, absolutely, and if the.
So, so why don't we, um, so Commissioner Martinez, do you have any other questions related to this? No, okay. So, um, why don't we, does any of the commissioners have any other questions regarding this?
No.
And Mike? Um, are there any other sound mitigation devices, you know this better than I do, or techniques or something? Because Commissioner raises a good concern about, the concern about, uh, you know, the loudness of, I don't think anybody's expecting, you know, Olympic-sized stadiums. I'm sure you would love the fact if hundreds of thousands of people would come here, um, to play there. But are there any techniques or changes that can be done to mitigate the sound or noise that goes out from there? With the understanding that the applicant wants to work with us and has agreed to comply with our ordinance. But are there like, are there like sound, like white noise machines or something like that? Is there some creative way to get around this problem? Because we want a good business, we want to keep our neighbors happy, uh, everybody likes volleyball, right, everybody likes volleyball. So, is there a way to creatively solve this? I've worked with, uh, more interior, uh, sound mitigation, regardless whether it's sound baffles, or sound walls, or sound pads, there's all kinds of things you can do in more interior. I think historically, what, what you do to try to mitigate sound when outside is additional landscaping. I mean, you can do privacy, you can do sound walls, but now you're talking an extensive expense, you know? Kind of what you're seeing with along I dot, you know, that, that's a, that's a huge cost. Um, so typically what you do, that what we discussed with, um, uh, with Carmax is, um, additional, additional landscaping. So there, there will be an opportunity for additional landscaping, so if you, you did reduce some of the number of courts, there would be some room for additional landscaping.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so why don't we do this, why don't we see, um, as presented this evening, right, with the six volleyball courts? Do I have a commissioner that is willing to make a motion to move forward with this plan as is? Okay, so I'm gonna take that as a no. Um, so do we have a commissioner that's willing to make a motion with adjustments? We, could it, could it, um, if you put up just a straight six-foot privacy fence in front of those trees? Does that help with the, would, would that help with noise and?
I don't think so.
No. Okay.
I mean, my concern, Mrs. Manigan, also is, I know he's not asking for the lighting today, but that could come down the road. And again, these are my neighbors, literally.
Each one of those would come back, though. So, I mean, I know what you're saying, but each, each request would have to come down through us.
And, and we're not even gonna go there in today's realm, only because we want to be curiously.
Right.
But I think we're talking about some here, I've got a, a patio that holds three hundred people. If I did a bag-o-lead, and people are cheering and hooting and hollering, I don't think it's any different than people playing volleyball court sixty-five feet over. That's, I mean, in reality.
Okay, and, and because it was a public area, and these neighbors, Sunset, they were not notified, or, right?
Not called.
So, they don't know that this is going in, correct?
That's correct.
So what do we want to do?
Well, we either approve it or nullify it.
Okay, um.
Or we approve it with notification.
So what do you guys want to do?
We can, but what are you gonna, what, what do you want to see to continue it, I guess, is the question.
Okay, so.
Right, so he's saying they'll.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve PCB twenty-four dash one-two, consideration of a site plan review to consider the addition of volleyball courts fifteen hundred Main Street. And you did have stipulations, um, with the, um, stipulations that were in the staff report, compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, compliance with the. um, stipulations that were in the staff report, compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Antioch Fire Protection District and no installation of lighting or a sound system at the volleyball courts.
Okay. So as is presented.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Flippo?
Sam Flippo? Yes.
Carsonson?
Same.
Meech?
Yes.
Mannigan?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Commissioner here is there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can let Bob Noye come back in and resume his post.
Right.
He's up front.
Congratulations on the chairmanship, sorry to see you go.
Yeah. So a short, short.
It's a short reign of terror.
I, I'll expect my gift.
Clap, Senator.
Yeah, yeah, my clap towering, my.
You would say Chair November sixth to November sixth.
Are you done being Chair now?
Yeah, eight twenty-four to eight fifty-two.
All right, um, I guess we're on to PCB two four dash one three, consideration of text amendment of the village ordinance section ten dash one four dash three A nine, uh, which regulates political signage within the village.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let the record reflect that this is a public hearing heard in accordance with state statute, all public notices and applicable to local ordinances. Mr. Chairman, this matter comes before this, uh, the planning commission this evening for a public hearing proposed tax amendment. As you know, we were in political season recently and we'll soon to be in local political season, uh, in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Uh, reviewing our assigned ordinance, uh, looking at that more carefully with our village attorney, uh, we determined that a section of that was not, um, legal, frankly, I was cut to the chase. Uh, so there needs to be a modification to our current sign orders, which is ten fourteen dash three dash A dash nine. So this section of the ordinance is actually in, uh, the section which says these signs are exempt. So we have one provision, uh, in our agreement, sign ordinance that generally is, I'm going to read it with assess. So political signs shall not be attached to fences, trees, utility poles, light poles, cylinder structures or placed within public right of way such as, such signs shall not be erected with, within sight vision triangle areas where safety concerns exist. Okay, that's the first, uh, provision. And the second provision, political signs shall not be erected, uh, I'm sorry, erected until forty-five days prior to a subject election. Number three is political shining signs shall not be removed, will be, shall be removed in fourteen days after election. So based on a Supreme Court case called Reed versus Talon Gilberts, uh, the Supreme Court stated that, uh, the Talon Gilberts regulations as relates to signs specifically was a violation of the United States Constitution. All, uh, signed regulations must be content neutrals. In other words, um, we cannot treat political signs different than how we regulate commercial signs or any other signs within the village of Antioch. And based on that fact, um, we believe, right, based on our village attorney's opinion, that section two and section three, which first, A, that we are having a limitation on when politicians can put political signs out, i.e. forty-five days prior to the, uh, to, to the village, um, election, that's a violation of, of, of current federal law. Um, and secondly, political signs shall not be, will be removed within fourteen days after reelection. Again, we, that's a different, we treat that differently than from the way we do treat commercial signs. Therefore, that is also a violation. Moreover, Illinois has specific state statute which basically prohibits villages which are non-home rule from regulating, again, political signs, uh, which have basically are, are, are incorporate content neutral. Uh, so the state statute also requires, uh, basically content neutral approach, um, from, so we cannot regulate outdoor political signs on private property. So, um, the only real, um, legal um, powers that we have, I think we have the right to basically make sure that political signs don't create a public hazard, public safety. And that would be not, we would not treat that any differently, any other sign. So if there's a political snipe sign or a commercial snipe sign or a local, um, you know, garage sale snipe sign that constitutes a safety issue or blocks a site triangle, we would treat that type of sign equally, it would not be based on con- content. And we would prohibit that, we do prohibit that. Uh, the good news is that we've never really enforced our sign ordinance, I guess, that we've never really pulled political signs unless they're within a right of way. Uh, so it's never been a real issue in Antioch, but nevertheless, I think it's important uh, to clean up our ordinance to make sure it complies with federal law. So you have before you this evening, a proposed modification in the, in the simplest terms. We're provide, we're requesting that we eliminate section two and section three of our current sign order, order, I'm sorry, political sign ordinance. So we eliminate the requirement that signs be limited forty-five days prior. So theoretically, um, based on this change, somebody who's running for trustee could put their sign up six months before the election. There's no limitation. And we're also requesting that, that, um, elimination of when those signs had to come down. Um, to be fair, most, um, candidates are pretty good in removing their signs. Once in a while, we'll see some exceptions, but most of those signs disappeared fairly quickly after the election. It's really never been a, a huge issue in Antioch. So with that, staff is recommending a text amendment, uh, with our proposed modifications as I've just outlined. Uh, and with that, I'll be more happy to answer any questions the commissioner has.
Ms. Sanflipo?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Carsonson?
No questions.
Mr. Meech?
No questions?
Mannigan?
Don't have a question, I just, I, I think someone has, um, made, got a workaround for the, you know, signs on the, uh, street on the poles. Because on one seventy-three, they're, they, they nailed this, a piece of wood this way against the pole and hung the signs on the actual piece of wood.
I didn't see that, so that, I'll have the, uh, bring our co-enforcement officer bring it to his attention.
It's just a, it's just, I thought it was them.
Okay, it's a political sign, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, so, but that's it, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Martinez?
So reading this, so political signs shall not be attached to fences, trees, utility poles or light poles, is that gonna reach, that gonna stay?
Yes, yes, that's consistent, we don't allow that for commercial signs either. So if you had a, a garage sale, we wouldn't allow you to put on a telephone pole or, you know, you can put it in your yard, obviously, but not on a telephone pole or something like that.
And so the only thing we're eliminating is the, uh.
We're, we're eliminating, we're eliminating the time factor yet, I'm okay.
Anybody else have any comments? Would you like to be sworn in?
Uh, full in twice, all right.
All right, all right. Mr. Green?
I just, I just wanted to comment, Michael wasn't here when I collected hundreds of political signs.
Yes, he did.
Put them in that garage and wasn't only political science, anything that was in the sign code, that was illegal, was in that garage. You could ask somebody old time.
We know.
Personnel here, how many were in this, in there? So we did, we did enforce that.
Yeah, we, we have that, it's okay. All right, okay. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion uh, to approve, um, let me get to uh, political signs text amendment twenty-four dash one three with the recommendations from staff is outlined in the second.
First, Mannigan's second. By Sam Flippo? Flippo?
Sam Flippo? Yes, Carsonson?
Yes.
Meech? Yes? Mannigan? Yes? Martinez?
Yes.
Concur.
Yes. Hey, motion passes, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Post and to adjourn, second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All righty, have a good night.